Dear kind of gracious God, we truly thank you for this day. We thank you for an opportunity to serve you. We ask that you be with our nation and with our state and with our community overall. We pray for peace. We pray for healing. We pray for families who have lost loved ones due to gun violence. We pray for families who've lost someone during the wars and violence. We ask that you be with our community and help us all to begin more to love and to care and to hope for world peace, community peace, all peace, that we need children safe. We thank you for the employees and staff of the City of Greenville. We ask that you be with them and their families as they live their lives and help them to do, be good servants. We pray a special blessing upon our city manager and upon our city council. Please help us to serve in the best way that we know how for the community. We ask that you be with us and stand by us and guide us and keep us all safe in your name. We pray. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible)
We'll call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWorthen.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Finn Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Brisington. Councilmember Russell Shaw. Councilmember Dorothy Dow. Here, Mayor Knox White.
Here. Council, ahead before you the minutes of September 9th, which will stand approved as submitted unless there are any objections. Seeing none, we proceed with our agenda. We have a few folks who signed up to speak to us. Be mindful of our three-minute, three-minute speaking rule. Otherwise, we're glad to hear, hear from you. Please give your address as you approach the podium. Laura Griswold is up first. Hi. I recognize a lot of those faces. Thank you.
I'm Laura Griswold. I reside at 207 Algonquin Trail. I'm the secretary of the homeowners board of boards, a partnership of the HOAs of Bellhaven Village, Bellhaven Towns, Brayden, Chelsea Towns, The Manor, Pine Crest, and Ruskin Square Communities in Hollingsworth Park. I'm speaking on behalf of these seven HOAs elected community leaders, many who are standing here with me. Together, we represent almost 800 homeowners in Hollingsworth Park. We're here tonight to support the proposed language for amendment in the development code as follows. The zoning administrator may require a community meeting or project preview meeting for a new or revised campus master plan prior to permit approval. Why is this important to us? Under the new development code, Legacy Square was originally zoned as RNXC. With the support of the Hollingsworth Park communities, it was rezoned as Campus to allow Verde Development to build something truly unique. In return, Verde Development promised two things. One, to work with and be transparent with the Hollingsworth Park communities. And two, to adhere to certain deed restrictions. In a recent article in the Upstate Business Journal about the future Legacy Square, Legacy Square development, stated that Verde Development is engaging the community. They are not. Appointing 15 community members who are bound by a very broad, never-ending, non-disclosure agreement in order to serve on a Legacy Square advisory group is not engaging the community. The article also showed some changes in the promised deed restrictions. The original all-service parking was changed to a no standalone parking structure, implying that parking decks attached to or under a building will be built. This is very concerning to us as it gives Verde Development the ability to increase density. Given the lack of transparency by Verde Development and the change in promised deed restrictions, we would like to respectfully request that the city council vote to accept the campus zoning amended language so the zoning administrator may require a community meeting prior to permit approval. We thank you for your consideration and for all that the mayor and city council does for the citizens of Greenville. Thank you.
You got 37 seconds remaining if you want. Jack, you want to take it? Thank you very much. We have Mr. John Slipski.
Good evening. My name is John Slipski. I reside at 43 Tyndale Avenue in Greenville in the Haney Serene neighborhood. I serve as co-vice president of the Haney Serene Neighborhood Association. I'm also a member of the Haney Serene Master Plan Steering Committee. In February of 2023, the Neighborhood Association first met with the city's planning staff regarding our desire to update the 2002 master plan and replace the existing planned development zoning district. Since that initial meeting, the Neighborhood Association has been continuously engaged with the city staff as a project to update the master plan was organized and managed. This evening, I'm led to begin by highlighting the extensive community engagement that has been the focus of both the city's project team and the Neighborhood Association. This emphasis on community engagement has included numerous stakeholder interviews, a community survey, well-attended public meetings. The Neighborhood Association has complemented these efforts with project planning updates and notifications through its electronic newsletter. We've also met with individual property owners and residents. In our opinion, the city staff has done an outstanding job in engaging the neighborhood and developing the draft master plan that was recently approved by the Planning Commission. The project team brought expertise and demonstrated willingness to collaborate and communicate with the neighborhood stakeholders. The draft plan addresses the key priorities and concerns of the neighborhood stakeholders and sets in place a vision for the future of the neighborhood. The Neighborhood Association also wants to recognize city manager Shannon Laverne. Shannon has been supportive of this planning project from the very beginning. She's provided excellent leadership and effectively managed the city's resources that were required to accomplish the goals of the master plan update. We also want to recognize Shannon's leadership and engagement with the city's planned land acquisition in the Haney Serene. Thank you, Shannon. In closing, we recommend the city leadership for their vision and commitment to Haney Serene. The city's recently announced land acquisition, coupled with the master plan update, presents a generational opportunity for the city to positively impact the Haney Serene neighborhood and the city as a whole. The Neighborhood Association strongly recommends city council approval of the resolution to adopt the draft master plan update as presented this evening by city staff. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Becky Worth.
Good evening. My name is Becky Worth. I live at 1 C. Wright Lane. That is within the Haney Serene neighborhood. I am co-vice president of the Haney Serene Neighborhood Association. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of our Neighborhood Association president, Felsey Harris, who is at her home in Shakora Crest this evening. The rest of this is a direct quote from Felsey. I would like to thank all city council members, Mayor Knox White, City of Greenville Planning Department, Clint Link and his staff, community development, and a special thank you to our city manager Shannon Laverne for your support of our neighborhood throughout this entire update of the master plan. Now the work begins of making these plans become real. More affordable housing is at the top of my list. Also, traffic. We really need the connector street sooner than later. Traffic is already on the rise on Howe and Haney Streets from the closing of University Ridge. You know, it has always been my hope and prayer for Haney Serene to be the best neighborhood in the city of Greenville. That will be our future. You know, I have to say it, very direct quote, please don't mess it up. I'm counting on you. Thank you.
That sounds like very authentic letter, by the way. Thank you. Mr. Joe Farmer.
Joe Farmer, 207 Alpine Way. I sent you all an email in referencing 15D on tonight's agenda. Why? We need to have elected representatives making tax decisions. Currently, the Historic Review Board has been handing out these property tax assessment freezes. And even though they technically meet the definition, it's really not the intent, and it's starting to get out of hand because developers are abusing this. In the last 12 months, this board has handed out $115 million over five projects in property tax assessment freezes. Now, one of the things that's most concerning is that this property tax assessment is used by the county, the school district, the arena district, Greenville Tech, and the library to assess mileage for them. None of these people has representation on this board. This board is made up of city residents. This board meets at 3:00 on a Thursday. There is very little input that is ever given to this. So even though these developers technically meet the definition, they're abusing it. So let's take a look at what we've got for 115 million. A concrete block building in Unity Park that was converted to a pickleball shop for 20 million. A brick building on Main Street that has been added to, torn apart, put back together for 32 million that will be a convenience store. A building on Main Street that was converted from retail to retail for 26 million. A concrete block office supply store that had a mid-century modern front for 20 million that's going to be office space. A home on East Park Avenue that was office space that was allowed to double its footprint and is now going to be office space for 17 million. And this Thursday, a proposal, which I'm sure will be approved, for a home that's over 100 years old, near St. Francis Hospital, to be converted to a consultant's office. These projects are not historic. I mean, if we were saving truly historic houses or buildings, then let's use this authority. But these are developers that are using the loophole that these are over 50 years old. How much stuff in Greenville is over 50 years old? How many of you live in homes that are over 50 years old? By this definition of 50 years old, I guess that makes my kindergarten diploma a historic document. I mean, we've got to rein it in, and the way to rein it in is for you all to take this adaption, move one paragraph where it would require city council vote as the final say. At least we have elected representation to oversee this. You know, the people on this board are doing a good job. They're following the letter of the law, but the intent is being abused. And if we don't change this, we may wind up losing this ability to give a start as a nation to anything. Thank you.
Ms. Carmen Pergas.
Hello. I'm so happy I can make it. I actually went to the county building, yes. I will not be long. I just want to share my experience. I had the fortunate opportunity to reside at the Dr. Edward B. McLaren residence downtown. It has been a blessing to be able to be a part of the affordable housing program. I've never had the opportunity to live in such program, and it has made a difference in my life. I used to commute from Simpsonville downtown to the Grand Bohemian, where I worked as the night auditor there. And it was very expensive. It was very expensive. So any changes that the council and the city of Greenville are making to improve transitioning from one area to the other for citizens such as me, I just want to say thank you. If you care about the city of Greenville and its residents, thank you. I'm a little nervous, so just bear with me. But while there are pros to this type of program, there's also a con that I've experienced. I've experienced more than one. And I just want to share that in the hopes that somebody else who's having to endure what I have endured can receive the care and the assistance that they need. I suffered a financial injury in May, and it lessened my income considerably. I used to be a student at Greenville Technical College, and during the pandemic era, I became sick and had no idea that a levy was taken out against me. And, you know, I wanted it to be paid, so I'd allow the money to come out. But in almost two months, $1,400 had been removed from my income, and I make less than $40,000 a year. So please understand that that was a experience for me to have to overcome. When that happened, I did not receive the care and the consideration that I would have thought would be allowed or promoted by the property management. And I'm having to go to court now to fight them for the aggressiveness that has taken I don't think anybody should be treated the way that I was. And while there are other developments coming, I really do want somebody else to not have to go through what I, what I went through, meaning being told, you know, you're going to lose your residency because you want to go the way of eviction. Going the way of eviction prevented me from being evicted because that gave time for share, agency, to step in and say, hey, we want to assist you. Let's go ahead and take care of a portion of your rent while you get on your feet. I also have seen some, some acts that were not equitable, meaning mental health resources not being, not being shared with tenants like other things would be shared. And I just want to say that as you all improve your city, please just be mindful of the people that you bring in to take care of measurements such as this. Dr. Edward McLaren was known for his compassion and his giving. He was known for stepping up to the plate when civil rights was coming about. And so I just want to thank each and every one of you for what you are doing if you're trying to make things equitable in our community. I also believe that Greenville cares, and I just want to make someone aware of my situation. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Nice to put a name and a face with, with that program we have in downtown Greenville. Good to know that. Thank you. Clarence Thornton.
Minister Clarence Thornton. I reside at 114 Dorfitch Street. Kind of hard to follow that because you hear these stories every day in our neighborhood, how people are being mistreated. And one thing I know that we've got to quit using the word gentrification like we toss around toss salad. Gentrification is a serious, serious event. It's to change the characteristics of a neighborhood, the poor neighborhood, for the wealthier people who renovate and build homes and increase the property value. So much that the property value that the low-income people can't live there. It is viewed as a process of urban development. It's a portion of a city developed rapidly in a short period of time and the displacement of a poor residence. God said you can't serve God and mammoth. What is mammoth? Mammoth is riches. Mammoth is money. Developers come here, all they think about is the money, material. They're talking about building 240 for loan apartments. They don't even know we're all going to put about 14 in there for affordable housing. Are we going to serve God or are we going to serve mammoth? We pray to God, but what are we going to do for the poor? We have the rich group. We heard about this story. Jesus asked for them to give to the poor. He wanted to go to heaven, but Jesus said, you lack one thing, give to the poor. He couldn't give to the poor, and he walked away. Jesus said, all the kind of things, feed the poor. Why won't we see this as a priority in Greenville? When I read John Lewis and their fight for civil rights, they fought their lives dying for people to have equality. Martin Luther King died for equality. They fought their whole life for this. What kind of America are we going to be if all we're going to do is give all our resources to the developers? Jesus wouldn't do that. You don't see Jesus hang around the rich developers he gave to the poor. In this incident right here, you can't script this. This is real. These are real people's lives. Their children are hungry. It hits me every time I hear people say, my child says his stomach is touching the back of his spine because mom is out of work and can't pay the bills. If there's someone out there trying to sell drugs. I'm just asking, where is our compassion? That's all. Thank you, and may God bless each and every one of you.
Ms. Inez Morse.
Mine is on a different, whole different level, so I want to come here this evening because I know that city council, Chandra Dillard, has advocated for funding for the Neighborhood Community Center. And so on behalf of President Vodrie Fleming and the entire Neighborhood Association, I'm here to express my heartfelt gratitude for first Representative Chandra Diller for advocating for funding for our neighborhood at the state level. To Mayor White and the entire city council, thank you for appropriating funds for the new community center in our neighborhood of West Greenville. The new community center will be a safe and welcoming space for people of all ages to gather, learn, and engage in various activities. It will undoubtedly become a cornerstone of our community as it once was. I heard about the stories that West Greenville Community Center had so many things going on. It was the center of Greenville at one time. So we want it to become that place again, and we are looking forward to not only having a first-class after-school program and summer camp, but also a place where there are activities for all ages. Your support and dedication to improving our neighborhood with a new community center is deeply appreciated. This new community center will be felt for generations to come, and we are incredibly grateful for your commitment to our community's well-being. Also, thank you for appropriating funds for the funding of the Queen Street Bridge project. That bridge today is a connection for people like me and others to Unity Park. It too is an icon in our neighborhood and much-needed asset. Thank you once again for your leadership and vision. We look forward to seeing the community center come to life and to the many benefits it will bring to our neighborhood. This initiative is a significant step towards enhancing the quality of life for all of our residents. On behalf of, again, President Vodrie Fleming and the entire Neighborhood Association, thank you to our city manager, mayor, and city council for appropriating these funds to make our neighborhood center a better place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Y'all are great partners to work with, too, by the way. We very much appreciate that.
And Mayor, I don't know if we're going to recognize her later, but Representative Chandra Diller is hiding out there somewhere back there.
We're sitting.
You know, I guess we have standing room only tonight. We have two special presentations up front tonight. 8A is recognition of our lawyer. When we established this position some years ago, we had no idea where we're getting ready for this motion, but it's been a wonderful, a wonderful ride for all of us to witness. So glad to have Glenn as witness tonight. I think we have a special presentation as well to thank you for all you've done for us.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to recognize Glennis Redman, the city's first poet laureate. Are you nervous that I'm speaking right now?
No, I'm not.
Actually, I've had the honor and privilege of working with Glennis for two years now, and I've watched her pour her heart and soul into this position while also managing an incredibly busy schedule as a writer, teaching poet, caretaker, mother, and grandmother, or Gaga. I was going to say, or Gaga. Since her appointment in October of 2022, she has represented the city in more than 50 public engagements, which is incredible, and has completed a number of unique poetry projects which you just heard about. During that time, she also served as poet in residence for the Peace Center and published two books, Praise Songs for Dave the Potter and The Song of Everything: A Poet's Exploration of South Carolina State Parks. Last year, she was chosen for the 2023 Poet Laureate Fellowship Award by the Academy of American Poetry. So if you ever feel like you have a lot going on, do not have coffee with Glennis. On a personal note, I just want to note, want you to know that I've enjoyed our time together. She has taught me so much about friendship and love and a little bit about poetry. I'm still learning. And I just want to say thank you, and I hope everyone would join me one more time in recognizing her for her inaugural.
Now, I heard some good news today, council, that Glennis is more than happy to continue in her role as poet laureate. And we may have some folks here who haven't actually seen her in action, other than that video you saw just a moment ago, which does not do it justice. Glennis walks into a room of any meeting with her poetry. She She always says, a lot of folks are kinda going, "A what? A poet?" And then 10 minutes later, they can barely get out of their chair. They're so taken away with what Glennis brings to it, to a meeting. So invite her to your next meeting, and she's just powerful in every sense of the word, never fails to do that. So we appreciate very much. And I don't know, whatever. Thank you so much. We have another commemoration tonight, I believe, from Artisphere, which also celebrated a big, big anniversary this year as well.
Hello, I'm Carrie Murphy with Artisphere. As we wrap up our fiscal year on September 30th, my colleagues and I, on behalf of our Board of Directors, the participating artists, and the patrons that attended the festival, we wanted to personally share the festival results and take one last opportunity to thank council for everything you did to make Artisphere's 20th Anniversary Celebration for the Ages. I wanna submit that the video you're about to see was shot at the close of the festival on Sunday evening, so please view my performance through that lens. The video until the end, you can see the results. An estimated 100,000 patients, 47% of those traveled 50 miles or more, according to data collected from cell phones by Clemson's Real Economic Analysis Laboratory. A 14.1 million economic impact and record-breaking artist sales. And you can see the long list of supporters there with the city at the top of the list. Council's support, not only for the festival's 20th Anniversary, but since its inception in 2005, has been an instrumental part of our success story. Of course, ATAC's support is critical, but even your participation at the opening night party, our poster reveal, and your presence on the street during the weekend lends serious street cred to our cause, giving us the leverage needed to recruit sponsors, donors, patrons, volunteers that all help make the magic happen. Fun side note, you saw local artist James McSherry. He made his Artisphere debut and was so inspired by the experience that he was moved to purchase a ring from a participating vendor and proposed to his local artist girlfriend, Glary Day Loughlin. That's the beauty of Artisphere, the community coming... Oh, let's not do that again. Sorry. Once is enough. Thank you, though. That's the beauty of Artisphere, the community coming together to revel in everything that makes Greenville special and create lasting memories while doing so. In sum, our presence here tonight, again, is Artisphere's way of saying thank you to council for your support. I also wanna recognize the amazing team at the city, Shannon, Tara, Will, Josh, Bree, Camera, Anna Catherine, Cameron, Victoria, Tracy, GPD, GFD, Parks and Rec, and a host of other city departments for their professionalism. I also wanna acknowledge the A-Team, Programs Director Robyn Aiken, Communication Strategist Kelly Barnhart, and Development Manager Allison Drew, who sends her thanks from home with two sick children. We look forward to spending this next year basking in our USA Today 10 Best Readers' Choice Number One Show in the Country designation, and we are committed to staying at the top for the next 20 years and beyond. Thank you.
Been a great, great 20-year relationship. And Carrie, thank you for all you do, and your board as well, all the people who participate. It's just a little gift for us. Okay. Leave that with the city manager down there. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have, we have an agenda to address tonight, and first, we also have some appointments to be made, boards and commissions, right off the bat is our Youth Commission. And who is handling that? So, oh, okay. The co-chairs, Aurora Clements and Erin, Erin Helsley.
Good evening. My name is Aurora Clements, and I'm a senior at St. Joseph's Catholic School.
My name is Amelia Cook, and I'm a junior at Christ Church Episcopal School.
Okay.
We are so excited to serve as the co-chair and the secretary for the 2024-2025 City of Greenville Youth Commission. We would like to recognize some of the current, current members of the Youth Commission in attendance today. Please stand when I call your name.
Erin Helsley from Greenville High, who is serving as the other co-chair this year.
And Jackson Benton from Southside Christian School. Thank you for coming tonight. Please be seated. Before we introduce our, our recommendations, we wanted to share that the Youth Commission met last month to discuss expectations and opportunities for this year. We are all excited to serve. We are also looking forward to learning more about local government and sharing the team perspective with city leadership and city departments.
Tomorrow night, we'll hear from Mayor Knox White as he provides historical context for the foundation of the city of Greenville and projections for the future.
Please keep us in mind for other opportunities to learn and provide input.
And now, we would like to go ahead and recommend the following individuals for appointment. Please save your applause until the end.
Okay.
Please stand as we call your name. Gabriella Barrera from J. O. Mann High School.
Nicholas Cabrera, J. O. Mann High School.
Caroline Clayton from St. Joseph's Catholic School.
Isabel Cart, Greenville High School.
Samantha Hartung, Christ Church Episcopal.
Harper Hughes, Greenville High School.
Niviel Cusek, South Carolina Governor's School.
Katherine Lynn, St. Joseph's Catholic School.
Ada Miller, St. Joseph's Catholic School.
Grant Rajanala, J. O. Mann High School.
Alondra Rodriguez from Greenville High School, who could not be here tonight.
And Katie Shive, Greenville High School, who couldn't be with us tonight.
Welcome to the City of Greenville Youth Commission. Can we please give them all a hand? Thank you. We are looking forward to taking a group picture with you all at the end.
Yeah. We have, we have these nominee, want to make a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion in second for these nominees to be accepted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have it. Okay, duly named. Thank you very much. Thank you. And council, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Do you have a motion in second on the consent agenda? Motion second. Call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye, thank you. Moving to the regular agenda, 15A.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.34 acre of real property and 0.10 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at 11 and 13 St. St. and 100 David Street, and to provide the zoning designation of R-N-A.
Motion second. Motion second. Any questions to Mayor Douglas? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. That's an awesome street, by the way. 15A receives first reading on Guest Street. Yes, thank you. 15B.
It's in my district.
An ordinance to annex approximately 1.57 acres of real property and 0.28 acre of adjacent right-of-way located on Guest Street, Or Street, and Seth Street, and to provide the zoning designation of R-N-C.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Motion second. Any questions?
Yeah. Can I, Mayor, can you go through this one? Because I have a question on it.
This is property that's mostly vacant now, and Greater Sullivan is across the street. So we've been working with Austin Allen on behalf of the owners, and they recently annexed the medical building across the street as well.
Can you get the slide up that shows the map, zooms in, what is part of the... Okay, right there. Here's my question. The, the house that's excluded is a gentleman, I've been to that home multiple times. He is excluded from this annexation, and all of this is surrounded by single-family homes, albeit outside of the city. I'm a little confused on the zoning for it. It's a transition, obviously, from guest to single-family residential, and what's proposed is quite a bit of density, which will no doubt overwhelm the resident in that one house that's excluded. I'm, I'm trying to understand the thought process in, in that not being RH zoning versus the higher-density zone that's proposed.
Proposed is R-N-C, so that is 12 units per lot. That's the, they can go up to 16 units with the bonus.
Mm-hmm. On each of those lots?
That's correct. So they, the, the property owner that is, we've been working with, they do not own the home, and that's excluded.
I understand that.
But as a reminder, the R-N-C will be house scale. It will be the missing middle housing, and they will be built to look like a single-family home with the form and the setbacks like a single-family house.
Is it possible that, I'm seeing one, two, three, four, five, six total parcels if that's divided, is it possible that six times 16 units could be put on that property?
Well, it depends on what they can fit. That's just the maximum, but ultimately, they have to meet the setbacks and the building coverage and all of that for the, for the zoning district.
Did the property owner request this zoning, and was there any consideration of, of making it both RH and maybe more denser on Guest Street?
I believe staff worked with them to identify the zoning district and looked at the future land use as well.
Okay, thanks.
And this will go to the Planning Commission October 3rd. So it's first reading here, and then Planning Commission, and then we'll come back to y'all.
Any other questions? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember, Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
No.
Mayor White.
Aye. Okay. 15C.
An ordinance to annex approximately 3.89 acres of real property and 0.79 acre of adjacent right-of-way located on Ridgewood Drive, and to provide the zoning designation of C-V and R-H-C.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Any questions on this one? Clerk, call, clerk, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15D.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Greenville and incorporate text updates into the Greenville Development Code recommended during the 12-month code review process.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Want to hear from Michael? Any additional? We have, we have briefed on this earlier.
Might point out that this is, from, from this point forward, we go to 12-month reviews, right, Michael?
Yeah, we're planning on another round of updates towards the end of this year, actually. So one more, kind of 18-month. And there's just some more changes that we really need to get in here. And so then, those will probably get posted sometime December and move forward that process in January.
I think it's worth noting and highlighting, following through with the commitment to review it on the schedule that was committed to when the code was adopted. I really appreciate planning and all the staff going through that.
Absolutely.
And we appreciate the public input we got on a number of items on this, too. And that's a very helpful, and got us to where we are tonight. So clerk will call.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you, staff, for putting this together. One, one thing I just wanted to, you know, we're, we're all looking, always looking ahead, so looking forward to supporting this, but looking ahead, wanna just make sure we're, two really, two things I wanna highlight here. Number one, the tree ordinance and, and how that impact zoning, where we are with that. Would love to take a little more look at that over the next six to however months. And then, the other, the other issue, really appreciate the city manager and others to look at how, how to navigate spurring economic investment by particularly our small businesses and also adhering to a code, this development code, but working, navigating through that to some, some, to make sure that we're not, to make sure that we continue to spur that economic investment from our small businesses. So, you know, sidewalks lighting, things of that nature. We've, we've talked about that, but just wanna make a point to say that.
Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15E.
An ordinance to appropriate $1,050,000 in the Capital Projects Fund for State of South Carolina Fiscal Year 2425 Appropriations Act, allocations for Nickel Town Community Center and West Greenville Community Center.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Thank you. 15F.
An ordinance to appropriate $4,500,000 in the Capital Projects Fund for State of South Carolina Fiscal Year 2425 Appropriations Act, allocations for public infrastructure improvements to the East North Street Gateway and a pedestrian bridge over Farday Boulevard.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15G.
An ordinance to appropriate $3,108,840 in the Capital Projects Fund through the public space upgrades and safety improvements allocated in the South Carolina State Budget for Fiscal Year 2324.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Do you wanna add a few things?
It's, it's really just a continuation of the state funds that we received in the Fiscal Year 2024.
However, a newcomer to this packet is the Pendleton-Vardre intersection. So for those Greenville High students out there, it's gonna get a lot better at that intersection, once we get some work done there. So really happy for the state's support on this. Thank you, Chandra Dillard. Is she still here? Hiding.
Representative Chandra Dillard, where are you?
She's still there.
No, Sash.
She's, she's gone.
Oh, excuse me, sir. Thank you, sir. He said, "She's gone."
On the original resolution that the council passed, it's just now moving.
Now getting the funding for it.
And Representative Bruce Banister and other members of our delegation also. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15H.
An ordinance to appropriate up to $5 million from the An ordinance to appropriate up to $5 million from the Parking Fund for the repayment of operating expenses to the Greenville Transit Authority and to rescind ordinance number 2023-47.
Some moved.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Councilmember Fleming. Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington. Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. Resolutions for new business. Everything on the agenda's
been pretty big and important tonight, but we have two extremely important ones coming up on the resolutions. So we're excited to do these tonight, so.
Item 16A, a resolution to adopt in principle the Haney-Surreen Neighborhood Master Plan, Neighborhood Plan Update.
Some moved.
Second.
Second. Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Thank you. 16B?
A resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a non-hiding letter of intent for sale and redevelopment of 206 South Main Street.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. This resolution will allow the city manager to proceed with our plans for a new city hall. Two years ago, we took care of the police department first.
Yes.
New police headquarters, being, being, well, you're, you're moving in actually right now, as well as other services. We built, what, three new fire stations the last couple of years.
Public Works Building.
To care of those things first, our Public Works facility. Finally get around to our own facility that was built in the 1970s, and it is no longer, Greenville is no longer a city in the 1970s.
Yes, Lord.
The people who work in this building find it, it's a very difficult working environment. Among many other things, though, this, this has been, of course, the site of city government for, since some 80 years to the 1930s, but this building since the 70s, and it looks like the 70s all around. One big part of this also will be that the city council chamber, which is our public meeting hall, will no longer be on the 10th floor, be on the first floor, where it belongs, where there's accessibility, and everybody will benefit by that. That actually started the conversation years ago, that we really need to put this chamber on the first floor. So that'll be a large part of it. And I want to commend the city manager for working with so many others to make, take us to this step along the way. We have a few more steps along the way to make this happen. We're talking about a private partnership and a flat $10 million cost, and the partnership means we can do this at much less cost than anybody else could do it. And the first five floors, Shannon, would be the city government offices, and floors above that would be, would be private development. So it's a very creative way to, to address the, the new city, the new city hall for everyone. Shannon, do you want to say a few words in addition?
I'm just very appreciative of council support throughout this process, but I really just want to thank all my teams. This wouldn't have happened tonight without the incredible work of a lot of people here on the staff of the city of Greenville, and I'm, I'm very proud to work with them each and every day and what they allow me to bring in front of you all to ask for approval. And so the next frontier for us is going to be, hopefully, a new city hall building. And I think that, again, we're approaching it in a very creative manner, and we're doing that so that we can, you know, build what we can afford and keep our costs low and in line with what our taxpayers expect, but also provide a, a great working environment for our employees.
Thank you very much. That means for next couple of years, the city government will be located elsewhere in the city. City council meetings will be held at the conference center, as we did in the past, but we'll kind of make do for the next two years and find out where we, where we'd land, but.
We're a little ways from moving.
We're keeping our eye on it. So thank you very much for all that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. All right. Any other reports, Madam Manager?
Yes, sir. First, if you didn't see the great news from our zoo, I'm so excited that our zoo was officially reaccredited last week. We had provided you the preliminary recommendations of the AZA after their visit here in June, and we've just seen such an incredible turnaround at our zoo, and I'm so proud of the work of our entire zoo's team, thanks to the great support we get from the community and our zoo foundation that, I mean, it's just been a great few years for our zoo, and so really proud of that accreditation and just the process this year was a lot less stressful than the process that we may have previously experienced. So great work to the entire city of Greenville Zoo staff and our PRT team, and a lot of our other departments that helped support that along the way. Again, nothing here happens by one individual or one department. It is a team effort. So great work to them. I want to thank my planning staff for their incredible Haney-Surreen small-area plan. They did a wonderful break. And, and I also want to thank my planning team and all the other departments for their work on the code update. I think Councilmember Dow alluded to it, but we are, we are living our promise. When we passed that code, we said that we would do what we are doing, and we're going to continue to do that. And I, I'm really proud of the transparency that we're creating in the process and what we're do, how we are using that process and that document to connect with our community. I mean, you see, you've heard tonight what these planning processes can do to connect the staff and the city with the community and vice versa. And that cannot be really fully described, but it's something that I think we can all feel. And so I'm really proud of the fact that we are living that commitment, and then obviously, the benefit it has to our community. So thank you very much. And then finally, I'm really excited about the continuation and the work we're doing for Nickel Town's Neighborhood Community Center, the great progress. Thanks again to our state leadership. Thanks again to Ms. Chandra Dillard for all of her work, and now moving into the design for West Greenville. We said we were going to do it in the state of the city. We put it in the budget. We thank all of our partners at this, at the state of South Carolina. We could not do it without them, and really excited to see where the next couple of years leads us with those projects. So thank you all very much. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I have no other staff reports.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.